Councilmembers Galloway.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Piana. Lennon.
Here.
Mayor Coulter.
Here, yes, thank you, we have a quorum. Councilwoman Piana is at the Mac and our Policy Conference. A motion would be in order to excuse her absence.
So moved.
Moved by Lennon, supported by Galloway. Do we need to, we don't need to call it?
We need to vote.
We need to vote on that. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmembers Galloway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to add two items to the regular agenda item, both regarding tentative labor agreements with Ferndale Police Officers Association contract and the AFSCME Local 1917 contracts.
All right, we will make those agenda items HC and HD. Any other additions, changes to the agenda this evening?
Support, I, oh, I would move the agenda as amended. Second.
Moved by Galloway, supported by Martin. Any other discussion on the agenda? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Councilmembers Martin.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, the agenda is adopted. Our next order of business would be presentations, and our first presentation this evening is from our police chief, Chief Collins, for the Department's Life Saving Award.
Thank you, Your Honor and counsel. Many times I stand up here and I spout off about the great police work that we do, catching bad guys. It's always, it's always warranted and it's a good thing to do. But tonight we have a very interesting award because it is our life, it's Department Life Saving Award, and to win this award, you actually have to save a human life. There are very few and far between, and they're very coveted. This incident occurred on February 2nd, 2012, at about 6:30 in the morning. Officer Jason White was on routine patrol in the area of Eight Mile and Woodward Avenue when he observed that there was a man sitting on the overpass about 25 feet above roadway, high volume of traffic on Eight Mile Road. It appeared to him that the man was going to jump. Officer White made his way to the individual, the individual continued, he called in to the dispatch, and then stop, got out of his patrol car, made his way towards the individual as that individual continued to inch his way over towards jumping into the, into the roadway, which would have obviously killed him. As he was engaging that individual in conversation, Officer Andrew Worm showed up unbeknownst to the individual. Officer Worm was able to come up behind the individual and grab him before he went over the side, thus saving his life. The individual was taken to William Beaumont Hospital for psychiatric evaluation, and for that this evening, we would like to first recognize Officer Jason White, and he receives the Department Life Saving Award. And Officer Worm also for the same life-saving award. I would like to add that this, I believe, after talking to Andy, this is the fifth time in his career that he's been awarded the life-saving award. He's also been recognized by the Detroit 100 Club for a similar incident where he saved somebody from jumping off of a large, of a tall building with number five life-saving award. He has now surpassed his traffic ticket count for the month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Officers, thank you very much. Great, great work.
Good work.
Thanks, great. Great, great news, Chief, thank you. Next presentation is from our Downtown Development Authority. Chris Hughes is here with us tonight. With a boxload of information. Heard of.
Good evening, Chris Hughes from the Ferndale. Is that good? I always get this wrong. Ferndale VDA Communications and Marketing Manager, happy to be here. I have a couple items, so real quick business. One is that tomorrow morning, we have a FerNet meeting for businesses to come out. We're going to meet in the pedestrian alley on South 9 Pedestrian Alley between Designer Resale and the Ferndale Arts Building. We're going to talk about Art Town, the art initiative that's going on right now. We're inviting all of our businesses to come and join us, meet us in the alley for a good time on 9:00 AM. We'll talk about how their businesses can be involved in Art Town. On that same note, regarding the South 9 Alley, I'm encouraging everybody to go to Facebook, Downtown Ferndale on Facebook, and vote for the South 9 Alley Project on Facebook so that we can hopefully win a grant to continue to improve that alley. We want to put in a drinking fountain that will be ADA and canine friendly. We're going to put some art in there, some benches, make it more user-friendly for everybody that goes there, including our pushcart vendors. So go to Facebook, vote for it, vote often, at least once a day, from now until June 1st. But here's the real order of business. Every year, Main Street Oakland County gives awards out to the downtowns and recognizes them for excellence in various areas, and Ferndale always does an excellent job because we have a great crew of people that work down here. So I want to take a minute now to honor the people that were not able to be at the awards banquet because they were busy doing other things as they op and ar. So let me just start, I'm going to read this because it's easier to do it that way and it's a little bit more clear-cut. "It took Dean Bach about a half a second," I'm pointing to Dean Bach there, "to raise his hands when it was announced at a Ferndale VDA Board Meeting that the Promotions Committee needed a chairperson. It took him less than that to get it all going. Inspired and/or spurred on being named Main Street Oakland County's Business of the Year for 2010, Dean went on, went in, went all-in at the Ferndale VDA and instantly became one of its best players. Already well-known around town for his involvement in events and fundraisers of every sort, the VDA was thrilled to have the engaged proprietor of one of the district's most popular establishments on its team. He backed at the table a can-do spirit, supported by a get-it-done M.O. If you want something, who do you go see? You go see Dean. Of course, Dean's work outside the organization continues to benefit downtown. As a sponsor of the Ferndale Blues Festival and the huge and delicious Rip Burnoff, a fundraiser for Ferndale Youth Assistance and Michigan AIDS Coalition, a champion of the Ferndale Film Festival, on and on and on it goes, he's a share, he does business videos for his business that includes whatever else might need publicity in it, DDA or otherwise. He also shares his friends. When an event needs an extra shot in the arm, Dean brings in one of his red-wing pals or his piston buddies. You could not pay a team player or a better spokesman, but of course, we pay him nothing but our love." And with that, this honor honors him for what he does so well, which is to be a really great volunteer. So from Main Street Oakland County via the Ferndale VDA, Dean Bach Volunteer of the Year in all of Oakland County, Outstanding Volunteer of the Year. We love Dean. Next up, in mid-2010, the Ferndale VDA received a phone call from a young couple with the dream they had for transforming 15,000 square feet of empty space into a destination marketplace for the region's leading indie artists. Tiffany and Chris Best were not, however, simply dreamers. It turns out, they were doers and thankfully, overachievers who put creativity, hard work, and perseverance into play to transform one of the district's biggest negatives into its greatest asset. This couple took on the challenge of occupying the most important building in downtown Ferndale where it was most visible at our most iconic intersection of Woodward and Nine Mile, and they made it work spectacularly. The West Belt Market exemplifies the entrepreneurial spirit at its finest. With enthusiasm, good business practices, and a never-say-die attitude, the Best have proven that dreams are very much a requirement in a down economy, and when carefully and properly executed, they become a change agent and an inspiration to an entire town. For all their efforts and for all the great work they have done and the change they've brought to downtown Ferndale, they were awarded the award as the most unique business concept in all of Oakland County. So Tiffany Best is here tonight. Her partner calls, come on up Tiffany. Her partner calls her a business ninja, which I, Tiffany, thank you for all the great work of West Belt Market. West Belt Market's going to host our Art Town Party, might as well get that little in on June 28th, but they're a welcome addition to our downtown, and they were recognized by others. The final one goes to the Design Committee, and I don't see anybody there from the Design Committee of the VDA. As you know, we're all, we are, they are all volunteers. So the Design Committee, a few years ago, got involved in a project, and it was a wayfinding program. Downtown Ferndale changed the meaning of wayfinding signage and instilled the idea of community, that wayfinding is telling the story of Ferndale, both past and present, through signage, business mapping, historical markers, and virtual tours. The intent of the public improvement project was more than just helping direct people to places or cleaning up sign clutter, but it was more a project to build cultural tourism and local, local vorism for downtown Ferndale. As one of only 43 cities to receive a Preserve America grant in the nation and two in the state, the VDA Design Committee and friends got to work, clocking more than 800 volunteer hours with a huge collaboration among local historians, business owners, stakeholders, residents, everybody that we could get to come to meetings, they came to me and had input into this project. The results are five new gorgeous historical signs and directory kiosks, 28 new directional signages, 100 new historical designation plaques, and a master plan for future signage throughout the entire city. This was done by the work primarily led by the Design Committee, which was Stacy Tobar, Scott Wright. I can't think of everybody's name, but it was a really great collaboration that produced some very concrete results that we continue to get, Ferndale continues to get complimented on. So if they were here, I would give them this, but it shall live in the VDA office and we can keep it at City Hall, but that's the end of it, and thank you very much, Main Street Oakland County recognizing downtown Ferndale.
Thank you, Chris. All right, our next order of business this evening, we have two public hearings. The first public hearing is on the transfer of membership, consideration to recommend to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, approval of the request from 22930 Woodward LLC to transfer membership interest in a 2011 Class C license, business with Direct Connection 1, Dance Entertainment Purpose Permit, Outdoor Service, and two bars by dropping Mohammed Malik as member through transfer of 51 percent membership interest to new member Woodward Avenue Investments LLC and to eliminate Direct Connection 1. At this point, I would like to open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to address counsel on this transfer request. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I guess I'll have City Manager over, I'm sorry, Sherilyn, do you want to?
This is just a very simple transfer of ownership from one member to another. Nothing is changing except that they are eliminating the Direct Connection 1 that was between Bosco and.
Magic.
Thank you, you just went completely blank, and magic back. The police department has investigated, found absolutely no issues to be concerned with.
Any comments or questions of counsel? Fairly routine, actually, but all right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Motion.
Oh, that's correct.
I would move that we recommend to the MLCC approval of the request for, from 22930 Woodward LLC to transfer membership interest in a 2011 Class C license to business with Direct Connection 1, Dance Entertainment Permit, Outdoor Service, One Area, and Two Bars by dropping Mohammed Malik as member through transfer of 51 percent membership interest to the new member Woodward Avenue Investments LLC and to eliminate Direct Connection 1.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Galloway, supported by Martin. Any comments, questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Martin.
Yes.
Lennon.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted.
Thank you.
We have a second public hearing this evening, and that is item B on your agenda, Small Wine Maker's License, consideration to recommend to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, approval of the request from Bee Nectar LLC for a small winemaker license to be located at 1481 Wordsworth, Suite B in Ferndale, Michigan. Open the public hearing, is there anyone from the public that would like to address us on this item?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Yeah, please do.
Probably a lot of you don't know me, I'm Brad Dahlhofer. My wife and I founded Bee Nectar about four years ago. I don't really have much to say, I just want to say thanks to the city for making it such a great place to actually start and run a business. We got pretty much turned away from a lot of people at first, and Ferndale opened their arms to us. My wife and I, you know, are raising our family here, and this business has been growing pretty rapidly, so hopefully you'll approve our new license. Thanks.
Thanks. Thank you, good to see you. Anyone else from the public that would like to address this item? Express your support for Bee Nectar. Good stuff, yeah. A lot of support. All right, I'll close the public hearing, and Madam Clerk, is there anything that you want to?
Just want to say this is very exciting, this is another business expanding in Ferndale, and we love it.
I would move that we recommend to the MLCC approval of the request from Bee Nectar LLC for a small winemaker license to be located at 1481 Wordsworth, Suite B, Ferndale, Oakland County, Michigan.
Support.
Moved by Galloway, supported by Lennon. Any discussion? No, other than just to echo what the clerk said, this is a success story, we're glad that you're doing well. Four years, you've, you've really expanded and grown, we're glad you're here, glad you picked Ferndale, glad the other people turned your way, apparently.
We're done with this.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Lennon.
Yes.
Galloway.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Moving on to item six, call the audience. Call the audience, as I think most folks know, is 30 minutes now, more time at the end of the meeting if needed, for members of the audience to address counsel on any issue that's not on the agenda, because you can address those items when it, when it comes that time on the agenda. Three minutes to come up and have your piece about anything you like, give us your name, your address, or if you don't want to give your address, just write it on the back for us. Our first.
Good evening, Thompson, Mayor. My name is Lewis Hefner, I live in 760 Florida, in Ferndale. Every Monday from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM at the Philly Center, we play Bingo, sponsored by the Ferndale Senior Group. Here's a point of interest, your chance of winning the Michigan Lottery is won in 276 million. Your chance of winning one of our Bingo games is won in about 25. How's that for odds? So why don't you come down and join us for an afternoon of fun. The cost for Bingo is $1 for your admission and 25 cents for each additional card. If you don't have transportation, you can call the Philly Center at 248-867-2742. And you must call on Thursday for a Monday pickup because they're closed on Friday. A bus will pick you up and return you to your home. The cost for the bus is $2 each way. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, counsel. My name is Matt Nowatzik, I live on 226 East Oak Ridge, and I'm just here in front of everyone to say, wow, thank you Ferndale on behalf of the Ferndale Community Foundation for such a great turnout for cleaning the Ferndale up. We had between 80 and 90 participants. We did five different locations, including three schools where we planted flowers, we cleaned up a bed on Woodward Heights right by Hilton, we worked on several other locations, we cleaned up all of our parks, and we had a great turnout, and hopefully everyone had a lot of fun contributing to making our town a little bit more beautiful, and kind of taking a little bit more ownership of those things we can control. I want to thank Credit Union One, I like printing, the Web, and everyone else for their support, Royal Services, there's just a laundry list, there's a listing over there that someone kindly put up, I'm not sure who that was, but at any rate, additionally, I want to thank Michael Larry, and thank everyone. This was just a little thing that we kind of thought, hey, wouldn't that be cool? And then it just kind of, you know, through the support of this town and through the dedication of so many people, it kind of just expanded on us, and you can look forward to us being again next year, trying to, you know, again, make it a little bit bigger, make it a little bit better. I think we've built up some capital this year and built some bridges so that hopefully next year we can do some cooler stuff. So thank you so much, and have a good day.
Well, and Matt, on behalf of the city, thank you for all your work and effort. I thought how you improve it next year, you guys, everybody did a wonderful job, thank you so much. City looks much better for your efforts. Anyone else for call to audience? Peggy Snow.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Peggy Snow, Ferndale Beautification Chairperson, and I wanted to talk about our everyday tree planting, which we were a little late with, but we had it last Friday through a little mix-up in communications, we didn't do it on time, but this is the, what we do to get the Tree City USA designation, and I think, did you get a little plaque or something?
We didn't, I presented it at a council meeting.
Yes, I saw that, yes, uh-huh.
Yep, and we're flying the flag at Eight Mile and Woodward, our.
Yes, so this is, you're really a big thing to continue to do this, and this is our 10th or 11th year, I'm not sure, but, and we, this year, I think we started out at Martin Road Park, I'm not really sure, but anyway, now we do it all at Oppenheimer Park, planting all the trees there. And since the beginning, we've had Mr. Williams, one of the teachers, he used to be at Wilson School, but now he's at the Coolidge Elementary, I think they call it, now I'm not sure. And anyway, he's been with us every year, and this year we added a new teacher, Ms. Kramer with her green beans. So there was a lot of children there, that's the thing with this Tree City USA, not only do you have to plant a tree, but you have to have a gathering of people, so that's one of the requirements. So Mr. Williams, we appreciate it every year, him coming and bringing students, and now we have Ms. Kramer's. And this year, we added Dan Martin, Councilman Martin came and joined us to help plant the tree. So it was a big success again this year. And this starts the busy time for the Beautification Commission, for the Beautification Awards, it's to nominate your neighbor, we need people to nominate your neighbors. That's how people are selected. People come up to me, oh, my neighbor down the street, their house looks so nice, well, nominate them, you know, it's, that's how we know about it. So we would appreciate people doing that, and they should call the City Yard at 248-546-2519. We give out awards June through September, and if a house is nominated in June and isn't selected that month, it stays in the whole summer, so you have four shots at it if you're nominated early on, so we'd like to get lots of nominations. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Peggy, for all your work you do. Are the, Matt, I'm going to ask the City Manager, the nominations are not on our city website?
We can get them on there.
Did we do?
I'm sorry, here's the form.
The form is on the website as well? Thank you, so you could go there as well and print off the form. Thank you, Peggy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of counsel and staff. Tonight's one of those nights where it's just all neat stuff and good news and awards, and congratulations to everybody. You know, I go to other city council meetings in other cities, and it's usually folks getting up and complaining, and in Ferndale, it's the opposite of that, people doing good stuff. A belated congratulations to the Woodward Avenue Brewers, who had their 15th anniversary this past week. It was very fun attending with Councilman Martin and Councilwoman Piana. I wanted to just share that as the summer year winds down, the school year winds down and summer's approaching, Ferndale Youth Assistance is also winding down. I apologize to the council, we had our Ferndale Youth Assistance Youth Recognition Night two weeks ago, and we were, unfortunately, you know, scheduled the same time, I think you had a special meeting that evening as well, but we did recognize 110 youths for some outstanding work in the school district. Councilman Martin did make it partway through after your meeting, so it was a really nice night, Judge Longo, and I emceed that, and I just wanted to report that it went very well. Also, this past week, Buffalo Wild Wings once again hosted the David Michael Smith Foundation fundraiser, and this is a fundraiser for Ferndale Youth Assistance, and nearly $1,000 was raised for that foundation, so I just want to congratulate everyone who worked on that. And finally, again, relating to Ferndale Youth Assistance, I realize it was several months ago, but we can finally report the final proceeds from the Ferndale Blues and Music Festival that's held at the end of January and February, and as usual, Dean Bach, who just won a Volunteer of the Year award, raised the most proceeds. We netted $20,000 in profit this year, it was up about 15%, 20% from the year before. $14,500 will go to HIV/AIDS education programs, and $5,500 will go to Ferndale Youth Assistance. And again, even though it's been a few months, I think it's important that people know that these funds do go to the charities, and we actually did very, very well, so once again, thanks. And we're now working on two more big summer projects, more coming, but the Ferndale Pride Festival and a host of activities beginning on June 14th through the 17th, so we have four days worth of activities, including a street festival. All of you are invited for opening ceremonies at noon on Sunday, the 17th. We do have mayors, council members, state reps, state senators, and others from all over the region attending. And then finally, it's time to start planning the, I think it's the 16th Annual Ferndale Pub Crawl, which will be on Friday, July the 27th. So lots of stuff coming, the car wash, Sherilyn is coming, I always like to harass you about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, thank you, all good stuff, thank you. Sherri Wells.
Sherri Wells, 315 West Troy with more good news. Over the weekend, I had different opportunities to talk to my other West Troy neighbors, and we have been absolutely thrilled with the residential parking permit and the enforcement. The raves from several neighbors have been, the street cleaner was able to come through. That means our leaves are going to be picked up in the fall, and the snow is going to be plowed in the winter. No more being sworn at, no more having our driveways blocked. These are, these are comments from many of the people. Can, can have some of our windows open because we don't have the loud noise after the bar of people coming down our street. With the parking permit, we had one car that was able to park on the street and then fill the driveway with five guests, and everyone got parking and was no, no problems at all for the evening, and someone said that with Saratoga cars can actually go in two different directions and pull over so someone can go through instead of trying to play chicken, and thank you all very much.
We're here to help. Anyone else for call to audiences this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next order of business. Thanks, everybody. Our next order of business is the consent agenda. These are items considered routine by city council, and we enact them in one motion unless something is removed from the consent agenda. Let me read tonight's consent agenda. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held May 7, 2012, and the special meeting held May 14, 2012. B is the approval of the special assessments for the summer tax roll, as submitted by our Assistant City Manager, Finance Director slash Treasurer. C, approval of IT Services Interlocal Agreement to service the city's online payments, and authorization for the city manager to sign the final contract. D, approval of the contract with Spyglass for telecommunications auditing services, according to the pricing agreement stipulated in the attached Spyglass Snapshot Audit Agreement, and authorization for the mayor to sign said contract. E, approval of the Michigan Uniform Video Service Local Franchise Agreement with Comcast of the South Inc. to operate a cable franchise in the city of Ferndale for a period of 10 years, and authorization for the mayor to sign the agreement. F, approval of the agreement with Tech Radium for the Iris Software Alert System with Section 13.0 Responsibility Indemnity Deleted as Recommended by the City Attorney, thank you, Dan Crisk. G, approval to adopt proclamation declaring June 2012 as Gay Pride Month. H, approval to adopt a proclamation declaring June 23, 2012 as Vincent Chin Remembrance Day. And I, approval of the bills and payrolls as submitted by the city manager's office, subject to the review of the city, of the council finance committee.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like us to remove items G and H, please.
Any other changes to the consent agenda this evening?
I would move that we adopt the consent agenda in its entirety except for G and H.
Support.
Moved by Galloway, supported by Lennon. Any discussion on the consent agenda this evening? From the public first, any public comment on the consent agenda from counsel? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Galloway.
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on to the regular agenda this evening. A, consideration to fill the Assistant Building Inspector position. City Manager April McGrath, if you want to explain that one.
Sure. I'm actually going to have Jennifer Longthorne come and explain in more detail.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we're asking for approval to fill the full-time position of Assistant Building Inspector in the Community and Economic Development Department. This position has not been filled for quite some time. However, during the last few years, there have been a couple roles within the Community and Economic Development Department that have been filled on a part-time, in a part-time basis, using contract work. There was a Housing and Rental Inspector, as well as a Code Enforcement Officer that had been performing those duties. Those, two of those people in those roles have since left the department to pursue other full-time opportunities. And at that time, we took some time to evaluate really what the needs are of the department and the best way that we can fill that position or those positions on a more permanent basis. Our proposal is to fill that position utilizing an Assistant Building Inspector to perform duties that would be somewhat cross-functional, handling both the housing and rental portion, as well as some of the code enforcement, and also assisting the building inspector when needed. And we feel that this would be the best utilization of our resources, as well as to be able to provide that employee with more of a full-time, consistent employment agreement.
At this time, by doing this, taking the two people that were contracts and putting it into one position, remains cost neutral.
That was going to be my question. The cost neutral move for the city. Any questions of clarification first from council? A motion would be in order, then.
I move that we approve the posting and improvement for the Assistant Building Inspector position.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Galloway. Now, any comments, other questions, thoughts on this item? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regular agenda item B is a consideration of an Oakway Mutual Aid Agreement. And who is going to, that sounds like a job for the fire chief.
Mr. Mayor, Council, this is a agreement moving the Oakway into the future. We had formatted the Oakway many years ago, and it's, over time, become inadequate because it is not a corporation. And so when it comes to federal and state assets, when you get grants and such, ownership has to be pushed off to one of the other communities to facilitate the vehicle and put it under their insurance and that. So by forming this interlocal agreement we formed with corporation, allowing us to do business better. It also came about with the MABUS, which was under the Oakma, the Oakland County Mutual Aid Association, which used to be the Oakland County Chief, was formatted. And that's what you originally approved years ago under Chief Schmidt. And that's where the MABUS division was found. We found that it was difficult to operate with par paid-on-call and volunteer groups outnumbering us at about 4 to 1. We go to vote on anything, we were pretty much outvoted. So by forming this, we pretty much stay within our own. The Oakway's always operated on a nine-out-of-nine city vote to pass any operating procedures and such within our group. There have been some changes. Dan looked over it. The only thing we had to add at the last second was, we didn't want the agreement to disband our agreement with Hazel Park and Madison Heights on automatic aid. We needed to keep the automatic aid thing in place because we're using each other as our third and fourth stations. So with that added in there, we feel this is a good move for us to move ahead. Also, the fees are the same. It's just that instead of paying $3,000 into the Oakway and $2,000 into the MABUS, we will be paying $5,000 into the interlocal agreement of Oakway, which will have its own MABUS division. So once we all do this, all nine communities, well, eight, excuse me, it's eight communities now because Waterford swallowed Pontiac. So we have eight communities now. And when all eight do this, then we will separate from the Oakma and their MABUS and reformat our own MABUS division. All the paperwork is set to go. We just need each council's
Questions of clarification from council for the chief? A motion would be in order.
I move that we accept the Oakway Mutual Aid Association Interlocal Agreement as submitted by the fire chief.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Galloway. Now, questions, comments, additional questions? So the dues, just to clarify, the dues stay the same? They were going to two organizations, not going to one, but no increase in the dues?
No increase in the dues, and the money stays. It's just that now, when we vote on it, the money will stay within our communities as our community boards wish to support. It's also a good step in the direction of when you talk about a local or community fire department. It's all heading in that direction.
There's no change in the liability or responsibility of the city of Ferndale, correct?
No. The only thing they could, we could incur debt, but we have to have an eight-out-of-eight vote. And then we all, we always come back to our boards before doing a thing. Most of the things we vote on are operational procedures that we share amongst the eight communities.
Thank you. Additional questions?
I would just make a comment that I think this is a great example of further collaboration that we've worked so hard at, and not only continue to work on it, but continue to revise how we do it, as we find better and more efficient models to accomplish this. So I think this is, this is good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If there's no other comments or questions, Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Appreciate it. Item C, we added to the agenda, Councilman Martin, you added to the agenda, and that is one of the tentative agreements. Do you want to... Well, I think I'll still let, City Manager, you want to introduce that item, please, AC?
I'm pleased to announce that we have settled with the patrol unit, as well as the AFSCME clerical unit, which is item D on the regular agenda. The goal was to try to, again, keep the contracts down to a year, in some instances, two years. With the patrol unit, we were able to get one year, so basically an extension with minimal changes, which is what we were looking for, to try to keep things as much status quo as much as possible. So I commend the police unit, Police Chief Jennifer Longthorne, who worked very hard to get this contract passed. So we're very pleased to provide a new contract for one year for the patrol unit for the city of Ferndale.
Questions of clarification for April? A motion would be in order, which we're on, this is the...
It should be at your table.
I move to authorize the attached changes to the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Ferndale and the Ferndale Police Association for the period July 1, 2012 to June 30, 2013.
Second.
Moved by Lennon, supported by Martin. Questions, comments, concerns?
My comment is, it's an excellent piece of work by Jenny and April, at minimal costs to the city for labor costs. Good work.
I would echo that. Great job by our staff. We, councilman is referring to the fact we didn't have to use our labor attorney on this one. We did this in-house. I would also commend our police officers, who are taking a 0% salary increase this year, again, you know, and that is a sacrifice that our employees are making, like all of our employees have had to make for the last several years. And I wish we weren't in a position to require them to do that. But the fact that they worked with us and made these concessions means, I think, that they understand the situation that we're in. And we really appreciate the efforts of all of our police officers for ratifying this almost unanimously, I understand. So thank you to the officers as well. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. The next item was also added to the agenda as 8D, and that is a tentative agreement with AFSCME Local 1917, our DPW supervisors. City Manager, you want to just briefly explain that one?
Again, the goal was, one of the other goals that we had beyond the cost-neutral contract was to try to get our public safety and our AFSCME units on different years, so that the HR would actually get something done other than negotiate union contracts. Again, I want to commend the DPW supervisors. They are as well taking zeros. This is a two-year contract, and adjustments to health care. So again, they recognize the state of the city, agree to 0% as well as modifying their health care benefits as well. So we're very pleased with everybody's participation. Again, thank you to Jennifer for working hard with that unit as well. And we're looking forward to building our relationships with all of these unions. So, thank you.
A motion would be in order.
I move that we authorize the attached changes to the collective bargaining agreement between city of Ferndale, AFSCME Local 1917 for the period of July 1, 2012 to June 30, 2014.
Support.
Moved by Martin, supported by Galloway. Comments, questions on this item?
Just echoing what you said in the last item, thank you to the staff and our representative partners in coming to this agreement. This was great work, and we appreciate the, you know, sacrifices that everyone's making in tough times.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is also adopted. The next item is formally consent agenda. G, that is approval to adopt proclamation declaring June 2012 as Gay Pride Month, as submitted by the city clerk. This and the next item were removed, I believe, because Commissioner Covey, you were hoping that we would read these, right? I'm reading your mind, or did you even say that?
Yes. If it's appropriate, Mr. Mayor, I did want to suggest, or let's share with the folks, most of you know this, but the Gay Pride proclamation was first written in 2000. It's 13 years ago. The city of Ferndale has adopted a proclamation declaring gay pride every year for the past 13 years. So even though it's somewhat routine, I still think it's important. The GLBT community had a major role in the resurgence and reemergence of Ferndale over the past 25 years. And I don't think we should ever forget that diversity is what has made us strong. And so whether it's St. Patrick's Day, recognizing the Irish, or Columbus Day and the Italians, or Cinco de Mayo and the Latinos, on and on and on. So I would appreciate it if somebody up there might not mind reading the resolution.
I would be happy to do that one. I'll split them with you, Dan, and then the next one. How's that? I'd be happy. And thank you, Craig. I didn't realize it had been 13 years, but that's a great tradition. We're probably one of the cities that have started this earliest in this area.
I think the city of Ferndale should be very proud that it has done this. And I think we are also, as a city, very appreciative of our community. And if I may address the Vincent Chin Remembrance Day as well, that is also a very important anniversary. I was in contact with some of the folks from the various Asian groups and American-Chinese society group. And this year, on June 23, is the 30th anniversary of the murder of Vincent Chin. And folks may remember, during my last year as mayor, we were able to install that memorial at Woodward and Nine Mile, which, again, I think demonstrates the importance of diversity and the fact that Ferndale, as a city, stands up for all to see, recognizing that it appreciates and embraces diversity. So there will be a large event in Madison Heights on the 23rd. I'll get all of you information if you're interested in going. And I appreciate that being read aloud as well, sir. Thanks.
Thanks, Commissioner. So let me read this proclamation. "The city of Ferndale is a city rich in diversity, and this diversity is demonstrated in the people who live workshops and socialize in our city. And we, the city of Ferndale, value this diversity and appreciate and celebrate the rich variations of persons in our city. We benefit from the multiple talents, viewpoints, and cultural backgrounds of all our citizens. And the city is proud of its American heritage that accepts and welcomes diverse people. And we believe in a society that treats people on the basis of their intrinsic value as human beings without prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical challenges. And we understand and appreciate the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of the gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender communities to the greater community of Ferndale, particularly in regard to the city's resurgence over the past 20 years. And we recognize June as the month celebrated worldwide each year with pride by GLBT communities, and that June 2012 is the 43rd anniversary of the beginning of the modern lesbian-gay rights movement, which began in June 1969 in the city of New York. Therefore, be it resolved that this city council recognizes and declares June 2012 as Gay Pride Month in the city of Ferndale, and we pledge to continue our efforts at creating and maintaining a city which is free and open city that provides equal opportunity, fair treatment, and human dignity for all people, and that a copy of this resolution be sent to the neighboring cities that border the great city of Ferndale, to the executive of the county of Oakland, to the governor of the state of Michigan, our U.S. representative, and our senators." Any discussion on that item? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Support.
Oh, that's right. We need a motion, Owen. Thank you very much.
Councilmembers Lennon?
Yes.
Galloway?
Ah, yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That proclamation is adopted. And then the final regular agenda item is the approval to adopt a proclamation declaring June 23, 2012 as Vincent Chin Remembrance Day. Councilman Martin?
Sir, the proclamation reads, "June 23, 2012 is the 30th anniversary of the death of Vincent Chin. And Chin, a Chinese-American from Detroit, was the victim of a hate crime, beaten to death on the day before the wedding of two men who believed he was Japanese, and blamed him for the loss of American automobile manufacturing jobs. And Chin's killers have never served a day in jail for his murder and continue to evade court-ordered financial responsibility for their actions. And Chin's death was the direct result of ignorance, malicious stereotypes rooted in painful history of racism and the lack of understanding education and dialogue. The tragedy of Chin's death became a primary catalyst for a unified, pan-ethnic, Asian-American movement and united people from all communities in walks of life to fight against hate. And the lessons of Chin's death will hold critical relevance today as we embrace the growing diversity of our community while addressing the challenges of hate crimes, anti-Arab, Middle Eastern, Muslim, Latino, and South Asian bias, gender-based and sexual violence, discrimination against LGBTQ individuals, and those with disabilities and bullying. And education and awareness are essential tools in the fight for a more just and prosperous community, and Americans can learn that diversity is a resource that has always made our nation better and stronger. Therefore, be it resolved that the Ferndale City Council proclaims June 23, 2012 as Vincent Chin Remembrance Day and stands together with all people in solidarity in embracing and valuing diversity and in rejection of unfair and un-American bias in our society."
Support.
Any discussion? Thanks, Dan. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Galloway?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Thanks, Commissioner, again. Our next item of business would be call to council. I don't have my glasses on, so point out the... We'll start with the police chief. I can see him.
Thank you, Ron. I have nothing on behalf of the police department tonight, but I would like to make one request. First one statement is I want to congratulate the graduates of Ferndale High School, which will be graduating tomorrow night, my son being one of them, but I like all of them. And then the other one, as been stated before several times by the school district, that Herb Ivory is retiring after this year. It dawned upon me this evening that I think maybe the city council, if they could pass a resolution in his honor, I'd be happy to prepare some information for the clerk. But if that is all possible, I would like to get that, have the city get that to him before the school year is officially out next week. So I apologize for the short notice, but it just kind of like jumped on me this evening.
Happy to do that. I mean, I don't know about the timing, but quicker you can get us some information, we'll get something together. Thanks, chief. Appreciate it. Yeah. Fire chief, anything else from the...
Looking for me, or...
Thank you. Joe, anything from the recreation department this evening?
She's got props.
A good recreation doctor does. Don't you say?
I said a good recreation doctor always has props.
Good evening. I have two upcoming special events coming up this month. The Saturday, June 2, is our annual bike rodeo. This is a co-sponsored event by the Ferndale Police, Fire, Recreation Departments, as well as Ferndale Rotary. So thank you, Sherry, for providing the helmet. The event is this Saturday... The event is this Saturday, from ten to two, at Geary Park, and we will have bike skills tests, bike licenses, and bike checks as well. You must bring your bike in order to receive a free helmet and your bike license. Coming up on Saturday, June ninth, is our annual trunk and treasure sale, from nine to two, here at City Hall Parking Lot. If you're interested in becoming a vendor, we still have applications available on our website, as well at the Kulik Center. Vendor applications are fifteen dollars, and you receive a parking spot to sell gently-used items, sporting equipment, gently clothes, toys, anything of that nature. And that's it.
Great, thanks, Joe, appreciate it. I see Joe back there, anything for the good of council this evening, Joe?
Just like us on Facebook?
Yeah.
Okay.
Derek's here as well.
Derek, yes. Anything from Economic Development?
Just a couple of things real quick, just a reminder to everybody that grass and wheat season is upon us, that started on May first and runs through the end of October. Just a reminder to everybody that there is an ordinance that requires to keep your lawn less than seven inches. You do receive a notice of violation if it's too long, but if it's not responded to, the city does come out and cut, and there's a fee, so we'd like to remind everybody. I'll steal Councilwoman Piana's topic as well, the Woodward Corridor Alternative Analysis Steering Committee met last month, there's soon to be a kickoff meeting with Parsons Brinkerhoff, who is the selected consultant to do the analysis of the Woodward Corridor regarding the transit alternatives. So, stay tuned for that. As soon as we have a date and a time, I believe that meeting will be open to the public, and we will let everybody know as soon as we know the date and the location of that meeting. So, thank you.
Great, appreciate it. Sherilyn, anything from the clerk's office this evening?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
All right. April McGrath?
On consent agenda, you saw that there was a contract with the county for SMIT services for online payments. We're very excited, we're hoping by July first that we will have the ability to take online payments for taxes, as well as, I'm not sure if the water will hit by July first, but we do know we want our July first taxes to be paid online, water to soon follow. So, we're very excited, one step closer to more efficiency, so very excited about that process. That's all I have tonight, sir.
Appreciate it. Dan Crisk?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilman Martin?
Just a couple of quick things, the application grant period for the Ferndale Community Foundation is now closed. The Community Foundation will consider grant applications and will award them at the council meeting on June twenty-fifth, correct?
Yeah.
So, thank you to the city manager's office for taking those applications, Joe, thank you. I want to put a plug in for Ferndale Rotary. Last week, Rotary gave three scholarships out to high school seniors, who are all heading on to further education, two from Ferndale High School and one from University High School. This is one of the many things Ferndale Rotary does, it's a great organization, and if you're interested in getting involved, they meet every Thursday at five-thirty at Blooms. And lastly, I just want to congratulate the city and the committee that put it on, the Memorial Day Parade this year was great. I thought it was, I think, a tremendous effort, I really appreciated seeing the additional floats, the Historical Society did a great float, and then the Michigan's Fallen, of course, is always very moving, but it was a great day in Ferndale. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lynn?
Well, I want to echo the same sentiments as Dan, I was going to mention Memorial Day Parade Association, excellent work, again. I believe there is a hot rod tour this Thursday in downtown Ferndale, am I correct?
May thirty-first.
May thirty-first?
Yes, I believe, and Michael will be very upset with me if I get the day wrong, but it's May thirty-first, and it starts on East Vestor, I believe, which is Thursday evening.
That's Thursday already? Yes, it is, okay. I remember that, and Fern Care's having a garage sale to raise money, and I believe that's June ninth, and we don't have a meeting prior to that, I don't think. And also, through the chair, to the city manager, every year we go through this, and you're probably not familiar with it, but it takes letters and calls from your office and from Derek's office to get the railroad to cut their property, La Wanda and all the intersections, so I believe they're based out of Montreal, so good luck, but, and that's it.
Very good. Councilman Galloway?
Just one thing to make it both timely and official, I'd ask for unanimous support for a resolution recognizing Herb Ivory for his decades of service to the community, to be drafted by the clerk's office with the assistance of the police chief.
I support that.
Great idea, great idea, and we'll get that done tonight. Any comments or discussion on that? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Lennon?
Yes.
Mayor Coulter?
Yes.
Councilman Galloway?
Yes.
That item passes, thank you very much, good thought.
And that's it.
All right, just me, and I'm also just going to echo the comments of the folks about the parade. Great job, as always, it was a tremendous amount of work, it was a record-setting day in terms of heat, but everybody held up well, and it was just a really moving and wonderful day for the city. Thanks, everybody, for your participation. And that concludes our meeting, thanks, everybody.